Uh, welcome to our August twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four board meeting. I'm gonna call this meeting to order and I'm gonna call the uh, planning commission meeting to order. And I ask our uh, attorney pray for us, Craig, would you pray?
Well, God, thank you for the day that you made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. Thank you for your word that guides us and gives us counsel. Help us to follow it, to be obedient in it. Father, thank you for blessing us abundantly in this county, providing resources, Father, providing what we need and what these men need so that they can make good and wise decisions that benefit all of our uh, clients, constituents, customers, especially our citizens. Thank you, Lord, for this place that you allow us to come and participate in government. Help us as a people, Father, to never take for granted that we can participate in our own government. Thank you, Lord. For how you bless us in Christ's name.
Amen. Thank you. Alright, we've called the planning commission to order uh, consideration approval of August first, two thousand twenty four minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Brad makes a motion to approve. You'll have a second?
Second.
I think Jay got you. Jay seconded that motion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes. It's old business? Do you have any old business?
No, sir.
Okay, let's just move on. New considerations. Uh, who's gonna present these? Brian? Let's go. If it seems like I'm rushing, we have a executive stat today. We, we have a lot of business we have to get through with and today only had a certain number of hours, so.
Alright, the first item under new considerations, we have William Dur seeking a conditional use permit to operate a paintless dent repair business out of an existing structure at two eleven Oakdale Road. This is a two acre parcel that is zoned RE one.
Alright.
Here is an aerial view of the property. Uh, this is a view of the structure now. He does plan to update the interior and exterior to bring a more modern look. He will have three employees. The turnaround time on the vehicles will be a maximum of three to five days and they will average around ten vehicles per week. All work will be done indoors and the vehicle, uh, the vehicles not being worked on will be parked indoors or on the gravel parking. Their hours of operation are from uh, nine AM to six PM Monday through Friday.
And, and you said this is already zoned RE one? I mean, was it a business there before?
Commercial business there.
It's my father's building, yeah?
Yeah, we stored like tire machines and all that stuff for years, you know, in that building.
Your name and address?
Don Duncan and the, the address is two eleven Oakdale Road. My personal address is fourteen ten Riverbend Road, Lena. But we just stored equipment in there and there was eighteen roller trailers and all that stuff and I've been cleaning them down to the last three trailers. My father had them sitting for thirty years, so you imagine they don't move too quick, you know? I beat on brakes for three hours yesterday, but I'm down to the last three. Everything else is gone. And the, the interior of the building is already updated, but we just wanna paint it like a gray with black trim, make it modern on the outside.
I'm familiar with them and the operation and what they're doing is an improvement to the community and uh, they do great work.
It really does.
So, um, let's just move on and we'll get to next section where we'll decide to set it or not. Thank you.
Next, we have KC Real Estate LLC seeking a conditional use permit to develop a rural subdivision on Highway forty three. This is a seventy-four point five-five acre parcel that is zoned A two. Rural subdivisions are allowed as a conditional use in the A two zone and are defined as original tracts that create no more than ten lots at a minimum of ten acres. Each uh, ten acres each, which contains one hundred and fifty feet of road frontage. Here's an aerial view of the property. Uh, there will be a total of four lots. No lot will be less than ten acres. There will be uh, deed restrictions stating no further subdividing without board approval. Manufactured homes, house trailers, mobile homes, modular homes, or prefabricated homes are prohibited. The minimum heated and cooled square footage is twenty-four hundred square feet.
Alright, let's move on.
Here's a view of the property from Highway forty three.
Again, I'm familiar with this.
Okay. Alright, Roger Williams uh, is consecu- is seeking conditional use permit to replace a manufactured home uh, with a two thousand seven fifteen by seventy-six manufactured home in the AE flood zone at one fifty-five Valley Cove. This property is located in the Rolling Hills subdivision and is zoned RMX. Aerial view of the property. Mister Williams is seeking approval to replace the existing manufactured home due to health and safety concerns that have occurred inside the, inside of the home. Rankin County adopted the flood preservation overlay district in March of this year requiring a conditional use permit for any development in a flood hazard area. Here's their proposed site plan. The existing home has already been removed from the property. We have received a flood elevation certificate stamped by Mississippi Land Surveyor showing the elevations are four feet above the base flood elevation and the requirements per ordinance is twenty-four inches. This is the manufactured home they are proposing to be placed on the property.
Right, I'm good with it.
How many square feet is in that manufacturer? Don't we have a minimum? No?
It's the year. It's if it's over twenty years old.
We do a review if it's twenty.
Yeah, I look at it and.
Alright, let's move on.
Alright.
Jennifer.
Jennifer Griffith is seeking a conditional use permit to place a modular home on Highway four seventy-one. This is a one point zero nine acre parcel. The property is zoned RE one. RE one zone allows modular homes with only one dwelling per lot as a conditional use permit. This is an aerial view of the property. Modular homes are factory-built homes that are built to state local and regional code and transported to where the home will be located and installed. This is an example of what the home will look like.
Brian, did you, are you about to show the access?
Yes.
How, okay, go, go ahead.
Um, this is, this is the access or this is the easement to the property.
It's gonna be home and make that turn to turn in the corner.
I did. Four seventy-one, where on four seventy-one is that?
Sorry, right before the um, pet grooming and the white picket fence or white fence with horses.
Posh paws?
Posh paws.
McKay Hill.
Sure, it's part of, it's part of McKay. Is this? Okay, let's go on.
Do we have any like pictures?
I know what it is.
Surround that's gonna be sitting in there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Not in, on the property because it's behind another house. Uh, but here, right here is where the access is on four seventy-one.
Yeah, and it's, what's the houses beside it?
This is the one that it's, oh, it's not.
Is that the one that's across from the slab of a burned home?
There it goes. So that's the house that's in front of her property. So it's actually gonna go around that.
But houses, I think that house is closer to Brandon. Uh, and it may even be in the city limits, I'm not sure, but.
Right there at it.
I know, I know where we're at and.
That's a odd.
Yeah, I, I needed to know.
Many properties?
Alright, alright, let's move on. Uh, we're just reviewing. This is a review.
Alright, yeah. I'd like to see the, I, I need to see the access. I wanna look at that.
Okay.
Okay, um, Ben Banks. Yeah, Ben Banks is seeking a, a dimensional variance of ten feet between uh, two uh, future structures on East Business Park. This is a two point three four acre parcel zoned I two. This is an aerial view of the property. The proposed structures will mirror his existing buildings on East Building, East Business Park. He is proposing to construct two new office slash warehouse spaces with twenty feet between the buildings. The zoning ordinance states a minimum space between separate detached buildings on the same lot require thirty feet in between. This is a view of the front of the property.
So what is the variance he's asking for?
He's asking for ten feet.
So do we give him a variance on his own ones?
Yes. No, not, not him, but somebody out there.
He's only, he's, he's only, I think there's only one building. He's built one building at a time um, out here. Let's see if we can find it. I don't know if it shows those buildings that are his. Yeah, right there. He's, he's only built one building at a time. This is two buildings on the same lot that he's building and, like I said, to get these buildings on the property, he's gotta squeeze them in a little bit closer.
Oh, so the variance is from the head of the property, not between the two?
The variance is between the two. To meet his setbacks, he's gotta come in ten feet.
We.
To make it more uniform with the other buildings.
When this began, we did a variance on some buildings out there. Uh, and now it seems like that's the thing. Instead of having the thirty foot, it's just ask for variance. Alright, it's a review, so let's.
Let's move on.
Move on.
Brian, the, the fire code requires what between buildings?
Ten feet of separation.
Alright, so there's not a fire code issue by allowing a variance to twenty feet? You're still with plenty of clearance in your fire code. That was the number one concern that I had was that we not allow the buildings to violate fire code.
If our rigs are gonna be thirty foot.
That's right.
Then we don't need to vary every time somebody comes in. We need to either move it to twenty or stand hard on thirty.
Or shrink your building.
Yeah, or be, get a bigger lot.
Yes, sir.
Alright, let's move on.
Alright, next we have Jordan Bellicet. Um, this is the last item under new considerations. They seeking a conditional use permit to construct a eighteen, eighteen hundred square foot metal shop with living quarters at thirteen hundred Shallow Road. This is a sixty acre parcel that is zoned RE one. RE one zoning does not allow metal exterior without a conditional use permit. Uh, this is a forty acre parcel that is in the shallow rock, a planted subdivision that contains six lots. Uh, this is an example of what the structure will look like. The metal siding will be ash gray in color. This is another example of the structure.
But didn't you say that they were wanting to do this while they're building their house to live in this, then this is gonna be the shop?
Yeah.
An office.
Living quarters will be removed once the house is built.
Alright.
Uh, is it, Mr. Bellicet plans to eventually construct a new residential home. It's a twenty-two hundred square feet. It says the covenants are a minimum of twenty-two hundred square feet. The shop with living quarters will then be converted into a shop and the dwelling portion will be removed.
I'm good.
Okay. Alright, uh, now we're to set public hearings.
You should set them.
Yes, I make a motion to set one, two, three, four, and five for September third. I'm making my motion.
Uh, what about six?
Six is on six.
Okay, alright. Alright, let's do two motions then. Alright. Brad makes a motion to set these.
One through five.
One through five for September third. Jay seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes. Alright, those are set. Now six.
I make the motion for number six to on September sixteenth, Jordan Bliss, conditional use.
Alright, Brad makes that motion.
Second.
I think Scott got it. Scott seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passes. They are set and we go to nuisance property hearings. Craig, you think I'm gonna make it?
Yes, sir. You're, Steve, that's the last time I'm gonna invite you to rush through anything. Man, did you, you're, you were following that instruction. Uh, number one, Tim Hall, nuisance properties, one twenty Rankin Road, District four. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Mr. Hall or anyone here on his behalf to be prepared to come forward and address the board. Brian's gonna demonstrate with the photos.
Mister Hall, if you're here, please, come up.
Alright, we, we've received a complaint on July tenth for an inoperable recreational vehicle in tall grass. These pictures were taken on July tenth. A certified letter and regular mail was sent to the property owner and both were, both were delivered. On August twenty-third, the property owner pulled an electrical permit to be able to run power to fix the RV up to move. No power was released when inspectors realized the property is a nuisance. Anthony Guy, building official, spoke to the property owner. The RV is now removed and grass is cut.
So the nuisance is gone?
It's gone.
And the RV.
Alright.
Cleaned it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
For the record, that hearing is closed and the minutes will reflect that no action was necessary. Mr. President, we're ready to move. Uh, we'll go to item two under nuisance consideration. This will be the Scott and Jennifer Clark nuisance property, four twenty-three Oaklawn Drive. This is District three parcel. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Mister and Miss Clark or anyone here on their behalf to be prepared to step forward. And Brian is already demonstrating with the photos. Thank you.
We received a complaint on May first uh, for tall grass in the backyard. These are the pictures taken on May first. This is a repeat nuisance from two thousand twenty-three. The property owners have divorced and the ex-wife no longer lives there. According to the neighbors, Mister Clark works offshore and is gone for long periods of time. Someone seems to be cutting the front yard. Uh, Ashley spoke with Jennifer on August twenty-sixth and was able to get Mister Clark's number and leave a message, uh, but no contact has been made. Per Jennifer, they are in the process of having her name removed from the property. These are the pictures from yesterday. The neighbor invited us on to her property to obtain pictures of the yard.
Didn't, didn't we declare that a nuisance? But see, I mean, Jennifer is not living there though, is. Her name's still on the.
Yes, sir. She, she still has responsibility to see to it that property is not allowed to, to go into the nuisance in, in situation, so. I, I understand that she's making efforts to try to get her name removed as a title over the property, but at the moment, that hasn't been done.
Is Jennifer or Clark here? I make a motion to declare the nuisance.
Alright. Brad makes a motion to declare nuisance. Jay seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
We'll close that public hearing. Brian, let's make sure that when we do our affidavit, that all property owners are placed on the affidavit as defendants and are all served for the purpose of the justice court proceeding. Uh, item three under nuisance, Mr. President, is the property group LLC Bill Johnson, manager. This is nuisance property eleven forty-nine Old Fannin Road. It's a District two property. Uh, I'll invite any representative of the property group LLC or Mister Johnson to be prepared to step forward. Uh, and uh, Brian will demonstrate with the photos. That hearing is open.
Okay, we received a complaint of grass, rubbish, and debris in parking spaces uh, and walkways needing repair on July the first. These are the pictures taken on July first. A certified letter and regular mail was sent and both received. Uh, we have been in contact with the owner, Mister Wimberly, and they have made progress on cleaning the property up. These are the new pictures that we were taking, that were taken yesterday. We, we stopped Mister Wimberly regarding who oversees the conditions of the parking lot and the overgrown ditch. Uh, they are in charge of the parking lot.
Are you Mister Wimberly?
Good morning, Michael Wimberly. Yes, sir.
So what are your plans to getting it up to par? This is the second time we've had to deal with your development here.
So I think this is the first time under us. I could be wrong. I think it was uh, Charles Brown previously, Dr. Brown. Uh, but we also, so we've cleaned up the back and now we have a contract with AJ Construction, uh, John Harold to repave the back parking lot.
Repave it. What about the ditch? Uh, do you own that ditch that's between, say, your property and Old Fannin Road?
So good question. We don't know.
You do not.
Pre- preview. We don't know previously when we bought it, Charles Brown told us that the county actually cut that and. No, sir, not just one. He got about thirty-seven overalls. So anyway, that's what we were told and it hadn't been maintained at some point, but not, not sure right now. Brian just brought that to my attention this morning.
You can take care of getting that cut.
We will. Yeah, it's ours. We'll get it, we'll get it taken care of. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
So, what, what caused the condition for it to be in? It never should have been like that, you know?
Agree. It should not have been like that. It's, I think it's a mixture, you know, there's tenants, there's people from a neighborhood that drop stuff there. Obviously, we, obviously, we don't put pallets. We don't put uh, mattresses, different things like that. The tenants don't do it. We provide, I think, five dumpsters back there that we pay for and.
People see the dumpsters and bring stuff thinking they can use.
And then when the dumpsters are full, they just put it beside the dumpsters because they're not gonna haul it away. So it's, it's an ongoing process.
So my concern is this is our shaky time to deal with this piece of property and I don't want to have to come back a third time and go through all this again.
I don't, I don't either, Jay. And, and, and we won't, we won't get there.
Okay. Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, let me just say, Mr. President, if I may, for the record, the, uh, the ditch is a, a long time issue, but I wanna, I wanna clarify something. Regardless of what the county may or may not have done a long time ago under a prior administration, that does not affect the private nature of that ditch. Uh, I wanted to state for the record and in Mister Wimberly's presence, that ditch is private property. And while uh, his entity may not necessarily have purchased that, it's gonna be dependent upon the legal description of the property when his entity took title and possession of the property. I have no, I've never seen that legal description. I don't know whether the ditch was included or not. But if it was included from Dr. Brown's legal description, I can assure you that ditch belongs to a private entity and not the county. The county does not have legal authority to deal with it.
Got access to it because it's all private.
It's all private. Yes, sir.
It is. Alright.
And uh, we, we would, we would have to consult others who are no longer with us uh, to determine how is it or how was it that the county may or may not have gotten access to the property?
Michael, thank you for jumping on and getting it.
Thank you for showing, there's your ditch, the infamous ditch. Uh, and so, uh, so thank you for that. Uh, that, that matter is, that public hearing is closed. Uh, the next item uh, under the nuisance considerations is the Fannin Lanes, John and Amanda Christopher, nuisance property review. Uh, this is eleven forty-five Old Fannin Road. Gentlemen, I want to point out that this is a review. You're not expected to take any action on this matter. This is to receive information and then to formulate some sort of plan to deal with any continuing nuisance consideration. Item four, Fannin Lanes. I, I will invite uh, either Mister or Miss Christopher or anyone on their behalf to be prepared to come forward and address the board if they wish.
Alright, uh, we received a complaint of loud noise coming from Fannin Lanes bowling alley from uh, residents of Regatta subdivision on August thirteenth. This has been an issue in the past and conditions were set on the August first, two thousand sixteen uh, Board of Supervisors meeting stating there will be no outside music or band playing. We have been out to the property and see no signs of music being played outdoors.
Hurt. Didn't hear anything either. Okay.
Yeah, so is, uh, is either Mister or Miss Christopher in the room? Yes, if you guys uh, are available. Do we have in, in, any individuals here who are interested in what's being said about this? Okay, y'all, y'all just hang on and we'll have an opportunity.
Morning. Morning, how are y'all doing?
Morning.
Well, state your name. Uh, John Christopher, eleven forty-five Old Fannin Road, Fannin Lanes. Uh, we, in two thousand twenty-two, we did have an issue and we shut it down. We got it. That was one time. And they had, we was not in town. I was not there and the DJ was playing music and it was astronomically loud. I get it. So I shut down and we said we'd shut it down to two thousand twenty-two, just open up in two thousand twenty-three and renegotiate and try to figure out what's going on. I worked through everything I could to sound dampening. I mean, it's hardy boarded, which is like concrete. It's got roll-up doors. When now I have already been when the loudest music, we got karaoke on Thursday. I told them to crank it up. I walked all the way to their field. I mean, I'm, I'm in Ms. Leanne May's backyard.
Give us a different, mic raising a hand. Give us a direction you're talking about from your building.
If you go toward it, it'd be the south side of it. Uh, yeah, south side of the lanes, right there. Um, I've actually called and talked to people at the assisted living. They can't hear. They're about seventy-five yards closer.
The key was assisted living. They probably.
That is true.
Right.
The staff comes over and they eat lunch sometimes and we ask them like, can y'all hear anything at night? And they're like, no.
So I've done it. I shut the doors. I've walked over there. I had sent Mister Barry videos.
Opened the doors.
Opened the doors. Went out there. Same thing, you cannot hear. You got an issue with crickets and grasshoppers out there, but you don't have issues with music. So I hear there's a complaint on a Sunday between the hours of seven to nine. Guys, we close at six. I'm literally closed down. I have for fifteen years.
The door, like you closed the business?
Right, we shut down. We're twelve to six.
Okay.
So.
So somebody could have been over there in a vehicle with a radio.
Could have been that. Could have been another person over there because I do know there was a DJ playing the next week after I got the call. And it was kinda loud and I sat out there and listened to it. And I recorded that. I think I gave it to Mister Barry. I'm not real sure.
Not on your property.
It was not on mine, no. I don't know what else to do to appease the, to appease heart. It's pretty much just one person. Uh, and I'm done. I mean, the, the next thing is law. I'm gonna get my lawyers involved in it. And because I have done all I can do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, you want to hear? Who, who, whomever from, I, I would say you guys who've been with Regatta, either the subdivision or with the HOA. Right. Alright, so whoever wants to speak and, and all of you will have an opportunity to speak, whoever wants to be spoken to come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. State your name and address.
Uh, I'm Martin Parkinson. I'm uh, Regatta, one fifty, Regatta Drive in Regatta subdivision. I am the HOA president. Um, I got it. Back a few years ago, Daniel Cross was our supervisor and we addressed this once before about people being on the patio. They were very loud and, and one incident he was talking about where the, it was real loud on Sunday. They were, I don't know what was going. It was like a, it was like a jam session or whatever you wanna call it. It was very loud.
Was this in two thousand twenty-two? Is that what you're?
I think that's right. Is that right? About two thousand twenty-two?
Okay.
And we even drove over there. It was a mob, you know, it was real loud. And it's been loud, so, you know, during that time and we talked to Daniel Cross and we, you know, filed our complaint. We had to come here and Daniel, you know, told him, you know, you can't have any more outdoor music. You just heard him say that. But it's starting again and it's not, uh, you know, I don't know if they're on the patio outside, but it is just as loud, you know. I, you know, it's just like, well, we're not, we're not on the, on the patio, but you know, if you're standing in the doorway, you know, it's, you know, loud music is the same difference, you know, it's loud music. We don't, we don't make a lot of complaints over nothing, you know. The, the people hear it. We hear it. There's a whole lot of homes through there and I live in a houses across the street from the homes that are getting the brunt of the, of the sound. I hear it. So I, I.
What time?
It's in the evenings, um.
With the last complaint that was called in.
Eight o'clock to ten o'clock, you know.
The, the complaint that was called in was after six o'clock and they closed at six o'clock. So, I mean.
Yeah, have you ever seen people uh, other than the business that have been outside like other bands or, or not at his business, at another business or even somebody in the parking lot, like kids hanging out?
No, I, I think that, uh, I think when this originally happened back in, you know, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, whatever, I think uh, Key that has black actors, Key Black.
Yep.
I think they had a, a band on a trailer outside one time, but that was during the daytime. But, uh.
But that's not while we're here.
No.
We're here for the present.
For the present.
And you're still hearing loud music after six o'clock?
On Sunday.
Yes, yes. And it's some trivia stuff. It's some loud speaking, loud, uh, uh, you know.
There people talking?
Were people talking?
When you say speaking, like amplified speaking?
Amplified, you know. Music or-
We don't have really a nuisance for loud-
We don't have a sound.
We don't have a sound.
I understand that, yeah.
So Craig, will you guide him in where he needs to be? Because obviously if it's people gathering in the parking lot and playing loud music.
Yes, sir. All right, so there's, there's a couple of things in play here. Number one, what's happening here today is an allegation and a review over what's considered a public nuisance. This board only addresses public nuisances. That is not the only potential action that could be in play here. Private property owners can assert what are called private nuisance claims against other property owners for violating their quiet enjoyment of their property.
Right.
And so that's, that's not a matter that would be cognizable by this board. We address public nuisances. And so as a, from a review standpoint, what we would need in order for you guys to consider a public nuisance would be an actual hearing. Number one, this is just a review. So there needs to be a statement, a, an allegation that you guys can act on. Date, time, what has happened, and then some level of proof with respect to that. Proof can be eyewitness testimony. I mean, you can have people come in and say, I heard it between these times and it is exceedingly loud and it disturbs my enjoyment of my property and that's happening at, in a wide enough range for it to be considered a public nuisance, okay? We're not at that point yet. So what you're, what you're doing right now is you're gathering information. What's going on here? You've heard from the property owner. We, we're not even operating on Sunday after 6:00 PM. There's nothing happening. Okay, so unless there's some proof that can be, can be presented that that property owner, that business owner is allowing loud enough to be disturbing to, to be broadcast during a period of time when they are not open, I'm not sure what we can address. If the property owners in Regatta are still having issues with noise, they are welcome to help themselves with the court system to address a private nuisance because I'm not seeing how it gets to the level of a public nuisance at this juncture. There's not enough proof there. This is not a, the actual hearing. If the Regatta HOA wants to bring forward specific proof that this board can act on from a public nuisance consideration, we can do that. But at the moment, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing how we do that.
We've already established-
It's a private nuisance.
Did we already establish that several years ago? Why, why are we having to come back and do it again?
No, no, no. We've already addressed it from several years ago. That matter's closed. It's, it's done. So this will be a new consideration and it has to do with current behavior. What's happening right now? What's happening right now?
And so here's the other issues. You got neighbors that live beside you that say that they don't hear anything. So we need to witness it for ourselves, basically. We, we need to have some proof. The next time y'all hear, call one of us so we can go up there and, and, and hear what you're hearing.
I don't know what neighbors you're talking about that can't hear it unless they're as deaf as I am, you know.
But he lives right on the fence there. Yeah, well, he's one of your neighbors.
I have a recording. Would y'all like to hear it?
Does it have a time and, and day on it?
It is a Saturday at 8:00 PM.
We were told it was on a Sunday, the complaint was-
We've had several complaints called in.
I, I think that needs to be a part of a submission to Brian. Allow him to review it. He can get it to you guys. So the process would be get it to Office of Community Development and it would be a formalized request to open a nuisance investigation. That needs to go to Brian and Community Development. So whatever information that y'all want to present, there's, that's where you start it. And then it comes before this board as an actual public hearing. We'll schedule a public hearing to review any of that information. And then y'all can make a determination. Is this a public nuisance? Or is this better characterized as a private nuisance? And we should direct the parties to go hash it out with one of our judges. Okay? That's kind of where we are in, in my opinion. So you've heard, you've heard information. Now that we still have people here, if y'all have other questions that you want to ask in this setting to gather your information, this would be the appropriate time to do it. Anyone else want to speak? Yeah. Any of y'all want to speak?
State your name and address, please.
My name is Leanne May. And I am at 138 Regatta Drive. I am directly behind the Bowlin Alley. I have been one of the many complainants about the noise that started in 2020. I underwent chemotherapy in 2021 and their noise disturbed my rest. I called Mr., what is his name? Christopher is not a very, he doesn't receive information well. He did not care that it was bothering me. Luckily, I'm cancer-free now and I am still having to listen to Trivia Pursuit on Sunday afternoon. I don't care if it's after 6:00 or not. That is my home. That is my respite. And I have to listen to Trivial Pursuit over a microphone in my house. I have a lovely screened-in back porch that I like to go and sit at, but I can't because I have to listen to Trivial Pursuit on a Sunday. I don't care if it ends at 6:00. Why is that even okay? Come stay at my house for a few days, Mr. Berry. I don't think you have this issue where you live. I don't think even Mr. Christopher is disturbed at his own home with Trivial Pursuit in his backyard. But me and another lady here is my neighbor. We hear it very loud and clear. Music is going on during the night, during the week as well.
Please document.
I have a video. Do you want me to keep doing it?
Yes.
I mean, I've done it two years ago when we made another determination. Why do we have to keep fighting, Mr. Christopher?
No, ma'am, you, you don't have to, you don't have to. There's, there's a forum, there's a forum where private nuisances can be handled. There is a forum for that. It's open every day, 8 to 5. It's called Rankin County Circuit Clerk's Office. And you can stand in front of a judge and he can address matters of private nuisance. What we're trying to determine is, is, does this rise to the level of a public nuisance? That's what we're, that is what we are going to engage for investigation.
Well, excuse me because I don't know the ins and outs of the, may I finish?
Yes, ma'am.
Of the supervisors. We got a determin- We got a determination last year. We thought that the bottom line was if music was ever complained about again on the patio, it would be not allowed. So we- I'm sorry?
Outdoor music. The board addressed the issue of outdoor music.
Okay.
I, I don't know that outdoor music is happening. Maybe it is.
Oh, so that's where we are. Okay, I get it. Okay, thank you. Mr. Berry, I am happy to meet. I am your constituent. Please remember that.
Uh, I do.
Thank you.
Ms. May, I have a question.
All right.
Do you think or do you know or the music is coming from-
We have driven up there and taken photos. We, we have a photo-
From inside the building? The doors are up or something?
We're not lying. I am not after Mr. Christopher.
I don't think you are.
Mr. Christopher is not willing to help us residents that live there.
Craig alluded to what I think would be the best avenue. An individual can file a nuisance-type claim at Circuit Clerk's Office.
We were told that by Daniel Craw.
Okay.
But Daniel took on this crusade, but he's no longer our supervisor.
It's, we can only handle public type.
Well, it's public.
This is between individuals and this company. We don't have the ability, we don't have investigators that can go out and record the sound and-
Well, why did y'all take it on then like two years ago?
Well, what we did was made them keep it within the building and put timeframes on it.
So then once they don't do that, it's our responsibility to catch them in the eye.
So what happened was, was they expanded outdoors and we gave them a variance. And, and part of that variance, they had to meet certain requirements and the noise is one of those requirements. So when they violated their variance, we withdrew it. And so they no longer play outside.
Yep.
So, and this is this year-
That's what they're telling you.
Well, it may be in a, I don't know.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. That review hearing matter is closed for the record.
I would like to speak to the owners of Bowlin Alley. You know, they're gonna be doing some asphalt work out there because there's some of your parking lot needs some attention too.
Yeah, we've already done it, marked out.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Any other questions, gentlemen? All right, we'll close that matter. Item five is the Edward Morris Nuisance Property. This is a review as well. 119 Lake Hill Place is District 2 property. Again, this is a review. You guys are gathering information. If Mr. Morris or anyone on Mr. Morris's behalf is present, we can have him come forward and be prepared to address the board. Brian will demonstrate with the votes.
We received a complaint on August the 13th of an excavator in the front yard of the property. Contact has been made with the property owner and the excavator was removed immediately. This is a repeat, this is a repeat nuisance. Thirdly, homeowner, the excavator will no longer be placed on the property unless permitted by the Office of Community Development for construction needs. We received a complaint on August the 13th. Is that, does it go over? Okay.
Nice ask. Thank you.
Yeah, these are the pictures taken yesterday to verify that the excavator has been removed. It is gone from the property.
I wouldn't imagine you want one parked in your front yard anyway.
Well, I was, I put minor 10 loads of dirt in my backyard because I've been living there 23 years and I had some erosion in the back and that's why. I had a tractor in the back too, but they couldn't see it. But I removed both of them. I, you know, I will be bringing it back because I took down some bushes on the side and I need to do a little work on that cross-tie wall. But I'll get with Brian and get a permit for that so we don't have this issue. All I want is harmony in my neighborhood. And, you know, my number's on the sign-in sheet and I welcome any of y'all to call me in the future if there's any problem.
How long was you sitting in the parking lot?
Probably about three weeks. I went to North Carolina for a little, about a week or a little over a week to visit my daughter and son-in-law. And when I got back, I had to let her and contacted Brian and found out what it was and moved it. It wasn't a big deal.
Thank you.
We may need Mr. Morris to go on up to Regatta and help yourself with that.
I don't know if I could help you with that.
We need your harmony.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Thank you for your help. Gentlemen, we'll show that that review matter is closed on the record. Mr. President, that's the last item that we have.
All right. Our next meeting will be held October 30th, 9 o'clock. The motion to adjourn out of planning.
Second.
Jay makes a motion. Scott seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? All right. Now go back to our Board of Supervisors meeting and officially cause meeting to order and-
Craig, Craig, is Joe on?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
We, we have a matter under my section of the main work session agenda.
Can we take it up?
We're very, we're very close. We're very close. Any other public comments? I see none. Let's go to Ms. Stacy. Ms. Stacy McNeese, I've asked her.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's that time of year again. I'm just requesting approval of application for authority to expend the one meal as permitted.
I have a motion. Jay makes a motion. Brad seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Slate? Discussion of fireworks stand on Highway 49.
I've, I've got Mr. Deaton coming forward. He, he's, he represents Ms. Robbie Covington who is the property owner at the new fireworks location on Highway 49. Gentlemen, this came before you just for discussion purposes on a couple of occasions and I want to publicly apologize to Joe and to his client because it was my responsibility to make sure we got this on the agenda at the proper time and I didn't confer well enough with Joe to understand when he could actually be here. So I apologize for that. That was my, that was my problem. So I wanted to state that publicly. We finally have gotten it coordinated and we're gonna be here at the same time to talk about this matter. I think for the most part, you've heard information. The first thing that we wanted to address was locate, the locating of some recreational vehicles on the property. That matter's been addressed. This board clarified that under your C3 zoning classification, I wanted to mention this so that Mr. Deaton can communicate this to his client. He, he is authorized to store recreational vehicles on the property outdoor because it is C3. And so we clarified that as a part of this board's deliberation. That matter has ended it. That could come into play possibly as the board now considers one other issue that we need to talk about and that's this. The facility, the, the building location that Ms. Covington purchased, I believe from a third party that was operating something other than a fireworks stand at that location, if I recall correctly. The way that that facility was configured, it had an upstairs office location. It had an upstairs office as a part of the building. And so when Mr. Covington took possession of the property to develop it into a fireworks location, there was a process for the utilization of that upstairs location. And I believe that our community development guys went in and conducted a review and gave some feedback to Ms. Covington and to his contractors about what was gonna be needed. They needed to install a compliant, as I appreciated, a fire protection barrier so that that upstairs location would, would be protected in the event of a fire. It's a fireworks stand, so we have to be cognizant of those situations. As a part of that review, it was discovered that, that, that the upstairs office location was being utilized as a dwelling, as a dwelling unit. And that brought about an entirely different conversation and we needed to address that. And so that's why we're here. It's to clarify and to get some clarification if we can. What is that upstairs being used for? Am I on safe territory here? Am I covering everything? It is the upstairs location. It's a downstairs location. All right, but that's still an office space as originally designed. All right. So what we wanted to clarify is what, what exactly are we doing with the downstairs area? How is that being utilized, if at all, as a dwelling? And get information on that. Again, this is kind of a review almost in the nature of a similar review that we just went through. And so I'm gonna let Mr. Deaton speak and bring any clarification. If y'all have specific questions, we'll both be able to try to address it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here to address this issue on behalf of Robbie Covington. I appreciate Craig being nice enough to say what he said wasn't necessary, but I appreciate it. Robbie bought this building from a guy who was operating a car lot. That was his residence. The bottom floor area was where he lived. In fact, they had to wait for him to vacate before they could close and find him somewhere else to live. When we bought it, we bought it understanding that that was an apartment down there. We did have a meeting on Friday afternoon, seemed like late one afternoon. And the compliance guys did ask us to put in some fireproof and some firewall stuff and as far as I know, that was done. The, part of the attraction of this building from that guy because it is down on 49, it's not in a neighborhood, it ain't close to nothing, was that there was a place that he could put a guy during fireworks season who could stay there to be sure nothing that wasn't supposed to happen, happened. Like somebody gonna break in there and spill a whole bunch of firecrackers and throw them in a highway patrol gas tank like what happened in, up at the Red Bull about four, five years ago. And so the issue here is not that even though this guy who had a car lot there and had, you know, you talk about the back of that place had greasy rags and fuel and, you know, cars-
cars being worked on and everything else back there. Much more than a prepackaged bundle of firecrackers. That's much more hazardous, and he was living in there, and that was okay. So all we're.
It really wasn't okay. He just got away.
Well.
We didn't know about it.
You know, e- e- either way, it worked, right?
He was doing it.
Yeah, so at the end of the day, I mean, we just want to be sure that that place, it does have adequate security during fireworks season. So, are you, you're asking, run the fireworks, have a security guy there that can stay twenty-four hours a day during fireworks season? During the fireworks season, that's what we're asking for. We're not asking to be able to rent that as an apartment or make that somebody's homestead or anything like that. Make that six seasons.
So what was brought to our attention though is like where the person would be staying is where the office is, where people come in and out.
I don't think that's right, but if it, if it is, I, I think the people come in and out in the back.
I don't know.
So, so, so let me ask this, because I, my memory very well could be wrong. When they were inspecting, when the county was inspecting this fireworks stand, one of the inspectors heard a child crying, and that drew their attention to that area. Am I right or wrong on that?
I believe that's, I believe I heard the same thing, Scott.
So they went and saw the area you're speaking about. Now, are we talking about a security guard or a family and a security guard?
I, I don't, I can't answer that question because it's the first time I've heard that. And I'm not gonna say that that's not true, because like I said, that's the first time I heard that. But, uh, we do have couples that run our fireworks stands, and if they can stay on premises, they're our security during the night. Now, I don't know who runs that stand, and I don't know if that wasn't just somebody there because the inspection took place during fireworks season.
Gotcha.
And, and, and so I don't know if that wasn't just somebody there, somebody working, had to bring their kid to work. I got no way to know that.
Cause that.
My, my recollection was it was in the day, it was during the day.
Yes, sir. Brian, do you have any issue? Do, do we have an issue of ingress, egress, or ADA that we need to talk about?
The, the, the ADA access, um, you go through the front door, through the office park.
The ADA access.
Yes, sir. That's, that's the ADA accessible route. It's through the front door into the warehouse area or where they're selling the fireworks. They have to go through the, the, um, office area to get to where they're selling fireworks.
The ADA.
Y- yes, sir.
The rest doesn't come around the building.
Yes, sir. That's right.
Roll up the door.
Yes, but it's, it, it's a gravel parking lot. There's no way to get.
So it may be that Robbie will need to, and, and, and this can be done between fireworks seasons, and we can work with him on getting it done. But we may have to have an ADA accessible pathway that avoids going through the office.
Or concrete sidewalk around it, back level, pull up to the concrete.
I talked to Robbie about that. Uh, we talked, when this first came up, I told Robbie about an ADA ac- accessible route around the building. He said he would comply.
That's, that's your solution right there, guys.
Apply everything.
Yeah, okay. We'll do that.
If I may add, just, just.
You're gonna cause me to go over.
Our preference, I think you've heard this, Joe. Our preference would be that, uh, that we clearly document that what's being authorized is onsite security during fireworks season. So as he's selling, he has onsite security, and that onsite security is allowed to stay in the building in that fire-protected area. What we would prefer and strongly endorse and really don't want to see is that that be a family situation or that there be minor children in there. Why? It is a distinct fire hazard. Somebody that's an adult that is employed is assuming some level of responsibility, right? But a kid that's, a six-year-old kid that's in there, cause dad is the onsite security, he didn't hit a boat on that deal. So we got to, we need to be really clear, and I think this is where your fire coordinator gets the most indigestion. If we know we got kids in there, that scares the life out of us. So, to help Robbie know that onsite security for that location, we need to try to avoid any minor children being in there.
For the record, Joe, that, that worries me in my previous career.
Absolutely. I understand. I appreciate y'all considering that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Joe.
More questions for me. Now, I'll be excused. Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Appreciate it.
Alright, Mister Hicks. Oh, we got one more with Craig, I'm sorry.
Yeah, memorandum.
Yep, one minute.
Gentlemen, we have, uh, I, and I hate to belabor this. I know it feels, it probably feels a lot like you guys are having to talk about this constantly, but this is such an important aspect of your economic development, and, and we've been spending a lot of time talking about economic development. We want to make sure that as far as your team is concerned, your representatives, that we clearly understand this board's position on how we're gonna participate in a particular important project. You guys set about, uh, to go into cooperation with the City of Pearl in particular, and with a local entity that controls access to Trustmark Park, that controls how that facility is gonna be utilized and how it can be made to be a benefit to all of the citizens of Rankin County. You asked that we go together and that we document how we're gonna do that. Okay, so that resulted in what's before you, which is the memorandum of understanding. And we want to make sure that we have the terms correct. So last legislative session, the state legislature authorized this board and the Board for the City of Pearl to go together, to cooperate together, to provide public support for that stadium so that it continues to be a viable activity of economic development in Rankin County. You've been authorized to contribute, uh, taxpayer funds up to a certain amount, and this board has set that amount specifically at four hundred thousand dollars per year. That is the limitation. That is what is reflected here. I need authority to now transmit this document with that number in it to the appropriate parties who also need to sign this document. Are we ready to go? With an M O U at four hundred thousand dollars?
I think we discussed this in previous meeting, and we agreed on the four hundred thousand. Does anybody have any discussion on this for?
I'm not asking this board to authorize anything. I'm asking you, may I deliver this document in this form for the other people to consider? After they have agreed and we are all ready to sign, then we'll come back and ask you for authority to sign it. I just need to make sure that we're good to tell the other side that we're ready to roll.
Do you need that in the motion?
No, sir. I, all I need is for you guys, all eyes, to tell me we're good to go. Get it sent, and let's see what kind of response we get. We good?
I'm good with it. Alright, we're good with it.
Thank y'all. That's all I had. Uh, we'll have more in executive session, gentlemen, and.
I, of course, we will.
I, to be here ten o'clock, and Steve did a masterful job of getting us to this point.
Alright. Thanks, Steve.
Good morning. Item A is authority to advertise notice of a public hearing on the proposed budget and public notice for Rankin County for fiscal year twenty-five to be held on September sixteenth at nine A M.
Alright, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Sid makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Brad seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Um, item B, I'd like to table until after executive. Couple items to discuss there. And then if there's any questions on the, uh, agenda for Monday, Tuesday, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Alright, do I have a mo- or any other additional business that we need to discuss?
Do we need to do that restocation on the climate today?
Uh, that's, that's additional business that we'll take care of, uh, after we come out of here.
I also want to, under additional business, when we come back.
Yes.
Discuss a road plan. Alright. Now then, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
A motion to discuss going into executive session.
Personnel and property acquisition.
Thank you.
Alright, Scott makes a motion.
Second.
Brad seconds a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now then.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Alright.
Personnel and.
Litigation. Alright.
Second.
Scott makes a motion, Brad seconds a motion.